God, I thank you for the privilege of living in a country where we have the freedom to choose to live by those truths. And I thank you for those soldiers that are over there protecting those freedoms and the ability for us to have the freedom to serve you according to our conscience. I thank you for this city and this community where every day decisions are made as a balance between justice and mercy. And I just pray that you would grant us wisdom, that you would grant us the ability to discern what is the right way and to do it. And I thank you, Jesus, for this time that we have tonight to deliberate on matters of the city. Be with us and help us in your name, my Lord and Savior. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have announcements and events from Fran Burns.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Like always, there's plenty of stuff going on in Haltam City, and so I'll try to go through these as quickly as I can. Please be sure to visit the images of Haltam City Photo Contest exhibit now on display at the library. The exhibit is open during library hours, and there is no admission charge. This year's contests entries totaled 350 works that were submitted by more than 100 photographers. A workshop and awards presentation is scheduled for 7:00 PM Tuesday, April 17th at the library. Everyone is welcome, and the contest judges have been invited to attend. This is stormy weather season in North Texas, and Haltam City Fire Rescue encourages everyone to be prepared in case of an emergency. Free information on how to prepare is available at City Hall and at the Central Fire Station. For those who cannot stop by these locations, the information is available by mail. Please call Public Information at 817-222-7767. Haltam City residents and businesses help clean up your town. Volunteers will be out in force this Saturday, April 14th, armed with bags, wearing gloves, and clearing litter from public areas and neighborhoods. Keep Haltam City Beautiful needs you. Report to the Kroger Food Store parking lot on Denton Highway at 8:30 AM Saturday, or call 222-7767 to volunteer. A picnic in Little Fossil Park featuring free food and fun will follow the cleanup. This Saturday is also Free Landfill Day for city residents. The CND landfill located at 4414 Dick Price Road in Fort Worth will be open from 7:00 AM till 1:00 PM, and will be accepting bulky trash from households. Proof of residency is required, and residents are limited to one pickup load. For directions to the site, you can call CND at 817-516-7777. Friends of the Haltam City Public Library will hold their annual book sale Wednesday, April 18th through Saturday, April 21st. The sale has outgrown available space at the library and has been moved to the Recreation Center at 4839 Broadway Ave. Hours of the sale are listed in the Crossroads Newsletter, and for information or to volunteer, you can call the library at 222-7786. Award-winning author Jordan Sonnenblick will be at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM Monday, April 23rd for a reception and book signing. Sonnenblick's works appeal to middle-school-age students, and his book, Drums, Girls, and Dangerous Pies, is included in the Lone Star Reading List. This event is free. And looking ahead to the end of April, Dumpster Day is scheduled for 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM Saturday, April 28th, at the Empty Lot on Bellknap Street next to McDonald's. This is an opportunity for residents to dispose of bulky items such as unbundled brush and construction debris. In addition, electronics will be accepted by Goodwill for recycling. Bring your computers, VCRs, cameras, camcorders, and radios. Goodwill refurbishes reusable items and recycles the rest. Early voting will begin... Excuse me. The election is May the 12th for the general city election. Early voting begins April 30th, and the last day to register to vote is this Thursday, April 12th. Please check the newly-designed Haltam City website for election information and other news of the community. The website address is www.haltamcitytx.com, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Fran. We have two proclamations tonight, and while we wait for the first individuals to make their way towards the front. This is for Pickup Litter Month in the city of Haltam City. I think Ben the Bear is on his way up to accept the proclamation. Ben, are you going to talk to the public tonight? This is Pickup Litter Month, and since I left my glasses up there, I'll do my best. Pickup Litter Month is April 2007, whereas it is the inherent beauty and harmony of the human spirit, which enables man to enrich his life by recognizing and appreciating the natural beauty in his surroundings and to create loveliness... Thank you. ...loveliness where none existed, and whereas with today's knowledge and technology, the opportunities for community betterment are without limit, and it is now within our power to bring true dignity, equality, and decency to our neighborhoods. And whereas we live in a state so bountifully endowed with natural assets and feel a natural continuing responsibility for preserving our environment by keeping it clean, healthy, and beautiful, and whereas we have the opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to this responsibility during Pickup Litter Month, which is hereby so designated for the month of April, and whereas there is a positive impact litter-free outdoor areas have on our quality of life. On behalf of the mayor of Haltam City and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April as Pickup Litter Month and urge all organized and individual segments of our population to participate in this noble effort to remove litter from our community, to enhance, restore, or maintain the beauty of our neighborhoods, and charge all citizens to make this effort part of our daily activities. And this is signed the 1st of April 2007. Ben, would you like to speak?
Well, I just...
Introduce yourself.
I'm Carol Williams, and I'm with the Beautification Board. I learned that we spend $32 billion a year cleaning up litter, which I think is just absurd, that money could be spent, you know, in so much more important things than that. We just all need to, you know, start with our own yards and just pick up.
Great. Ben? Bye. Okay. Thank you, Ben. And we have another proclamation. It's Jessica Campbell. Jessica.
April is also Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have Jessica Campbell here to accept this proclamation. Whereas 17,444 reports of abuse and neglect were reported in Tarrant County in 2006, whereas 4,463 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Tarrant County in 2006, and whereas Alliance for Children provided child-focused services to 2,213 children in 2006, which includes 414 children in northeast Tarrant County. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. On behalf of Mayor Lanford of the city council of Haltam City, Mayor of Haltam City and the city council, we do hereby proclaim the month of April 2007 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Haltam City, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in the years to come.
Mrs. Sun in April.
Thank you very much.
Jessica, would you like to... Do you have anything you want to...
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Haltam... Oops, I'm sorry. I'd like to say thank you to the city for their support of Alliance for Children and our efforts. We partner with your local law enforcement officials here in working those crimes against children's cases, and they're always very supportive for our children. And also, we work with the District Attorney's Office and CPS and provide a safe, warm place where children can come and tell their stories, and only have to tell their stories once. And then after that, we provide counseling services and referral services free of charge. So it is a community-wide effort to protect children. It does take everyone recognizing how to report abuse and to keep children safe. And hopefully, 20 years from now, Alliance for Children will have served 2,300 children. We've only served two or none, because the community has taken the initiative upon themselves to educate themselves and to be brave and to confront child abuse. So thank you very much.
We have had a request from a citizen to withdraw Agenda Item Number Four for discussion, so the consent agenda will not have Item Number Four as part of the consent agenda. We'll discuss it after the consent. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless they're removed from the consent agenda upon the request of a council member or of a citizen. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Councilmember Holcomb?
I'm sorry. I may have jumped the gun here. I was setting up to move to approve. The consent is written unless Item Number Four.
Okay. So that's motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
With the exception of four. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, ma'am. Just for a second.
If I could add something here, just for the sake of the citizens. There is an item on here, Item Two, which is going to be changing May's council meetings on the consent agenda. Normally, the council meets on the second and fourth Monday of every month. In May, the fourth Monday is May 28th, which is Memorial Day, which is a city holiday. So what the council has opted to do is to move their meetings from the second and fourth meetings of the days of the month to the first and third Mondays of the month. So it'll be on the 7th and the 21st of May. And that's what the action on Item Two, when they take this vote, if they approve it, that's what they'll be doing. So for May, it'll be the first and third. Then in June, it'll go back to the second and fourth.
Are there any other comments? Okay. If you'll register your votes, please. And that's unanimous? Oh, and in case you all hadn't noticed, Mayor Lanford is not here tonight. He'll be back in town late this evening, so I hope he's having a good time. Since we removed Item Number Four from the consent agenda, let's address it now before we move on to the rest of the agenda. Tom, would you like to introduce Item Number Four?
What you have before you is a resolution that was actually brought to our attention from the appraisal district. It's a... There's some legislation that's pending in front of Austin, and the resolution does not exactly support that legislation, but what the resolution does is support requiring sales disclosures to the appraisal districts. And this is specifically in the interest of fairness and accuracy in determining the appropriate values of the properties. Right now, there's not a requirement that this happened, especially in the high-priced residential and the commercial markets, that there's not that requirement. And there's various reasons for why not. The retailers don't really want it, because they think it's going to be revealing of some of the financial worthiness of their clients, and some other issues. And those are valid concerns. But from... Since there has been issues regarding evaluating a property and whether it's in putting caps on or having, you know, caps on the revenues, I mean, the appraisal increases and whatnot, that having a fair and accurate system is certainly something ideally to support. But, you know, this resolution is just mainly going to be supporting that concept.
All right. And we have someone that's requested to speak on this, Ray Eklund. And Ray, you know to give your name and address and all that good stuff.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, tonight, Madam Pro Tem, how have we addressed you? My name is Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. I'm very concerned about this item, and I'm concerned about Haltam City representing that we were in any manner supporting this item as it goes forward to the state legislature. I would like to ask, and Mr. Muir caught most of the language of the statement in your public, in your packet, but most of the public hasn't heard exactly what was said. My notes, I would like to follow the... The Tarrant Appraisal District wants this thing to pass. They are the ones asking for the support. No doubt, they're lobbying the state legislature to pass this law. You're elected to represent the citizens of this community. We're the ones that put you up there. You're not elected to represent the Tarrant Appraisal District. Nothing is fair about this. It's purely an invasion of privacy. As a person who has bought more than one house in my career, I can tell you, it's none of your business what I pay for a house, okay? It's between me and IRS, right? I buy it for one number, and I sell it for another number. If we're lucky, I made a couple bucks, and I tell the IRS, and they tax the fire out of me, but that's another problem, okay? Does the grocer have to tell us what he pays for a gallon of milk before he sells it? Yeah, it says no, but you're asking me to tell everybody on Open Records what I paid for a piece of property. Now, everybody says, well, that's fair and equitable. You're not going to like it if I buy a house next year, or somebody else buys one, okay? And in this declining market with a record number of foreclosures, bankruptcies, all these other problems we got out here, right? And then fine, upstanding citizens like you, put your house up for sale, and guess what? Your values have been undercut by these other people who had to represent all their numbers to the Tarrant Appraisal District, okay? So although your household's not in trouble, you won't be able to get the dollars per square foot that you felt like you had coming because of all these other market problems. That's going to backfire on Haltam City. I don't think we should support this resolution. The sales prices and values are directly tied to the recorded sales dollars. Again, everybody understands about comparables. Your council packet talks about the high-value properties, but let me assure you, it's going to affect all of us, right? Now, I agree, I've seen some experiences where high-value properties seem to be undervalued. But I also did research on the 2,900 block of Haltam Road this afternoon, and I got some questions about some houses over there. The property values run between $25 a square foot to $89 a square foot on the same block. There's reasons for that, but that seems like an awful big spread, right? So yes, there's some difficulty sometimes, but it's not a high-value thing, and I can't believe they put that in your package. Your staff recommendation says that other states have this, and we should have it too. Well, let me tell you, my mom always told me, if the other kids are all jumping off the cliff, do you want to do that too? These other states have protections that this law's not going to give us. For example, the state of California, they do in fact secure your property values at what you pay for it, okay? Along with that, those taxes, those valuations are frozen, and they stay at that value for the life, as long as you own the property. So if you buy a house today, remember, this is California, if you buy a house today for $400,000, it stays at $400,000. Now, your property value may jump to $600, $800, a million dollars, but your taxes stay down at this level. Now, will they creep up? Yes, the tax rates could do that, right? But the valuation doesn't creep up, right? This proposed law, is that going to give us that kind of protection? And before you vote on it, do you know? Are you prepared to do this thing and not that thing? These two things go together, right? So when these other states have it, this is purely a matter of having your cake and eating it too, okay? We need to decide if we're going to jump into the California system, fine, let's jump. I'm not against it. Seems to work okay. I'm against taking half of it, which is report your values, and not protecting the consumer, the homeowner, and that includes you guys too, right, on the other side of the thing by not letting your property values rise. Anyway, that's pretty much it. It's the Tarrant Appraisal's job to come out and appraise our properties. It's not their job to sit up there and put their feet up and wait for us to bring stuff to them, right? I believe the city of Haltam City and all the other cities ought to get off of this railroad, right? They've asked you to support this thing so they can go down to Washington or to Austin and say, oh, look at all these nice people that signed on with us. You guys are here to represent us, and one of us thinks this is a bad idea, and I'd like you to represent that idea. Thank you.
Are there any comments from anyone on the council? Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is one of those issues where there's going to be good people that will be on different sides of the fence. Number one, the law's in flux. This is a proposal down in Austin. It is not... The form that it has taken is in committee right now, and it is being debated. Some of the policies, reasons for doing this is so that it can be more equitable, a tax policy that's more equitable and that actually draws more revenue from the appropriate sources. I think that this bill could very well help low-income people, because they can be taxed more because of people that are wealthy, that do not have a good appraisal on their property, and so they pay less taxes. And so you could take the other side of this, which people down in Austin have already lobbied and said on behalf of this bill that this will actually help people that have lower income. So... But like I say, this is a bill that is in flux. I have done some study on it. People that brought this up are concerned about the equitableness of property values. TAD is concerned about their ability to correctly identify what a property is worth, and if they don't have sales data, it's very difficult for them to do that, because then it becomes a, this is what I estimate it to be, versus actual sales. And that's been a problem all over this country, America, not just Texas. This is one of those bills that are, you can ad nauseam argue about. It is a resolution to support this effort, that we need to do something about TAD. There has been a cry to do something about TAD property values and getting them accurate and better and more fair to the people that own property, and this is an attempt to do that. I think that we're undercutting people in Austin by saying, we want you to fix it, but we're not going to tell you how to do it. This is an effort for the city to send something, and it means just that. It doesn't mean that everybody in Haltam City agrees with it. It means that some people on the council looked at it and thought it was worthy of being supported, and so they did. But it does not mean that everybody in Haltam City supports it. In fact, I would encourage, if you disagree with it, that you would go to Austin, or call Austin, or call your representative and tell them, I disagree with this. That's the thing to do. But as far as I'm concerned, this council member feels like this is the right step to begin addressing property inequity, and I think it's going to be a benefit for Haltam City.
Thank you, Councilmember Sutton. Councilmember Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I think there's a little more to this than what I initially suspected. With this being a resolution, is there any rush on coming to agreement on this?
No, sir.
Tonight?
No, sir.
With that in mind, if there's no other comments, if there is one other comment, then I'll hold.
Councilmember Cabana?
I do agree with Councilmember Sutton in that we need to look at TAD and how they're evaluating property. My main concern, and I expressed it earlier, was that, yes, they can come in and they can get the values of the sales, they can use that data, but my concern was, what happens if the market takes a downturn? Are they going to use those new datas to sit there and reevaluate your property to go down? I don't know. I don't know what safeguards are in here. I'm hesitant to sit there and give our support on something that is a fleeting idea right now. I do agree in fairness and accuracy. I'm an accountant, and I live by that. But I don't think we can sit there and say, you know, I don't know about everybody else's, but my personal property value has not gone down since we, you know, since I've had my house, and I'm just concerned that they'll get these rates, decide to go up, and, you know, when the market goes down a little bit, we won't see that reflected back on our values. So I'm hesitant to throw our support towards this, and, you know, that's my concern. Thank you, Madam Pro, Mayor, Tim.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Madam. Since we're going right down the line, I guess I'm next. I agree with Jim and Councilmember Cabana that I'm in favor of there being some way to fairly get a tax rate, the value of property, so that everybody knows what it's worth, whether you're buying, or selling, or taxing, and we're getting our percentage of the money here to run the city. On the opposite side of that, and I haven't read the bill, maybe it's part of my fault, it probably is, I don't know if there is a provision that when the value goes down, that TAD will do something. As long as I've been in Tarrant County, and part of that in Dallas County, I don't remember TAD ever going down. I may have missed it, but I don't remember it ever going down. When it goes up to a position, and the values of the home, the property goes down, it just maintains that for the two, three-year slump, as best I can remember. So I can see both sides of this, but I think in what we're saying in the resolution and supporting it, is that what we're saying is, there needs to be a fair way to get the value of property so everybody who's saying, selling, and buying, and for us, the city, to know the value of it. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Hutchinson?
All right. I'll give my two cents worth here. I'm in favor of a fair and equitable way in which TAD can fairly appraise property values. I think that the bill that's before Congress right now, and is in committee, it addresses both sides of the issue, I think, fairly, and it doesn't necessarily, and by saying this, we're not necessarily supporting TAD. Being fair and equitable, that doesn't mean to me that we have to support TAD when they go up on appraisal values, but I think is a fair and equitable, because there may be a way, this may be a way, this bill may be a way, to force TAD to lower their rates, as my esteemed councilmen have already talked about. So there is an attempt here to try to address those issues, and before, there was no way, and we, and I agree with Councilman Clark, that we don't, we haven't ever seen TAD go down, but this bill may be a fair and equitable way to ensure that they do go down if the sales values are reported accurately and fairly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me clear up a couple of things. Mr. Eklund's points, a lot of them I can't really argue with. He's right. I know, strange as that may seem, Ray, I'm not arguing with him. The resolution, the bills that are referenced in the cover memo are the bills that are currently being proposed, and I've got issues with those bills. I'm not, this resolution does not support those bills. This resolution supports the concept of sales disclosure in the interest of fairness and accuracy. The bills that are proposed down, I mean, one of the bills is talking about calling an election to require that person to reveal his sales disclosure. That's, I find ridiculous to have a county-wide election to determine if Mr. Eklund needs to disclose his property, the sale of his property. I'm not supportive of that, but the, I think the resolution is not supporting any particular kind of legislation, any particular bill. It's just supporting the sales disclosure in interest of fairness and accuracy. And the, you know, this thing, if the council's got, certainly got some concerns, I've talked with Mr. Cabano about it, I've talked with Mr. Sutton about it, they've expressed their concerns, and, you know, this is, I put this on here, man, it's the same way that I put typical ordinances or resolutions that we get from our neighboring governing bodies for the council to consider. I talked to the mayor about it before putting it on here, and he just suggested putting it on here. If you've got some concerns, I mean, table it, or, you know, don't do it if you don't want to. I do not think that just because this thing was on here, that you got to just, that you should. I hear your concern... I hear your concerns and, like I said, Mr. Eklund does bring out some points, but I do think the... In the... For fairness and accuracy, with the onslaught of legislation that is being proposed down in Austin to affect cities, that it's only reasonable to do something to maintain the fairness and the accuracy of the valuations that we currently have. It's... I don't know how you can go against that. Now, this may not be the right way to do it, but there may be some other things.
Pass the form.
I didn't fill it out yet.
Oh, okay. Well, if it's not filled out, then there's no point in passing it up.
Okay. Can I speak now?
Go ahead and give your name and address.
Your name and address.
My name's Gary Nye. I live at 4912 Ira, Fort Worth. I mean, Holtham City, excuse me. I'm a real estate broker and I have been to Austin all this. I can tell you that the Texas Association of Realtors does not support this for many, many reasons. Texas Association of Realtors supports property owners' rights, mine and yours and everybody's. I think there's a large misconception on what TAD does. TAD's only function is to appraise real estate. It is not to lower or raise taxes. Their only function is to appraise real property. Now, the misconception that you are going to send out here, if you vote in favor of this or one way or the other, is that they... That they're your friend or your enemy. They're not. They're neutral. They have to be. That's why they were created. It's a neutral process. They are not a taxing entity. It's not going to be your friend, your enemy. It's not going to help you. It's not going to hurt you. It's going to be honest. And so they want data, and you're an accountant, that somebody else has generated for their purposes. Now, I look at them kind of like they're Harvard University. Harvard says, "We don't have to be accredited. We're up here. We're the authority." They are the authority. If they need our data, then they've got an internal problem. We don't need legislation to feed them data. Now, every day when I open up my email, I have all kinds of people offering me data to help me improve my business if I want to buy it. Now, as realtors, we generate a lot of data for our own use internally. I sure don't want to give it away because it costs us money. Now, if they're having a problem doing appraisal, appraisal's difficult, I guarantee you, because the market goes up and down and up and down and it goes all over the place. But to think that they're your friend would be wrong. To think that they're your enemy, they'd be wrong. They're neutral. I mean, to me, it's a... It shouldn't even be an issue. And I really don't understand why people argue about it. The only thing we can do is to try to tax fairly and try to be fair and to try to take care of our property. And it's a real struggle for everybody. But you do what you want to about... I mean, they're going to pass it down there or reject it one way or the other, no matter what you do. And there's lobby down there on both sides of it. Heavy lobby, I can tell you, because I've been down there. But I just hate to see anybody think that if you do something good for them, they're going to do something good for you because that's not the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not sure I see these bills seeing much of the light of day. Do I? I don't see... I don't expect to see these bills seeing a lot of day, a whole lot, unless the ones that are being drafted or proposed.
I don't either. I just hate for anybody to think that if we do the... It's not a... It's not going to be, "We're going to get this for that." I just don't see that. It's really not that, and I hate to see anybody think that.
I understand. I understand your point. And Mr. Cabano's point about lowering it in the interest of, again, fairness and accuracy if the market goes down, they should be accurately reflecting that. They should be. Now, that's not what I see in the bills that are being presented, but the bills don't talk about increasing values or decreasing values. It's only talking about fairness and...
If there was a bill out there that would specify that we had, you know, some type of guarantee, if market value went down, the average market value went down, everybody's value went down or market value went up, everybody... You know, if we're fair and accurate on this, that's great. My concern right here is the image that we're going to give that we're going to support these bills when in actuality, we don't know what these bills are going to say. They may be great bills. They may wind up in the end being something that we can work with. But until we see them, I'm hesitant to sit there, even, you know, with this right here, going in support of this in the image that people may say, "Okay, they're supporting that." And I don't want to give that.
Sure.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, I'm in line for a motion. Councilmember Holcomb.
In the interest of the different angles of discussion, I move that we table this to give us a little more time, to give me a little more time to have a better understanding of everything that's involved here.
Thank you, Councilmember Sutton.
I'd like to second that with comments. In discussions I've had with some Holtham City people about this, there was mostly a favorable reaction, not because of the content of the bill, but because of what Gary was talking about, just wanting to get an equitable and fair taxing system. But certainly, if this resolution is not going to communicate that intent, and I think in fairness too, that if there's that much ambiguity-ness, we need to table this.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
I don't take issue with the fact that we're going to ta... That we could table this. What I read though, and the way I read this, is not sending a message other than being in favor of fairness and accuracy. And so I have a difference of opinion. I don't know how we could read that any other way because it says right here in the fairness and essence of fairness and accuracy. I have no idea what the bills are going to do and what they're going to say and how they're going to come out in final form. I have no idea what that's going to be. But I do believe in fairness and accuracy in the way it's reported. And the way one of our citizens has reported over here, you know, he told me, flat told me, that it's none of my business about sales information. So, you know, that doesn't sound like it's fair and accurate. It just sounds like it's, you know, just none of my business. So I... That's the way I read this. But I am in favor of, you know, because of the ambiguity, like my fellow councilman Sutton, if we have to table this so that we can take a better look at this, maybe write this a little bit better, maybe write this, you know, this resolution a little bit better. I'm certainly in favor of that.
Any other comments? So your motion is to table this till... Have a time?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay. Motion is to table...
Indefinitely.
So if you'll register your votes, please. It passes unanimously. Can we come to the public hearings, an ordinance portion of our agenda? The first item is number nine, the ordinance for a second reading to conduct a public hearing in consideration and action approving the second reading of ordinance 2007-01104, continuing the city's juvenile curfew regulations. Chief Burton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. I have to get used to that. This is the second reading, as you've already indicated, of an ordinance that we think is a great tool. The reality is that there are very little positive activities for children under the age of 17 after 11:00 PM during the week and midnight on the weekends for them to engage in. And this is a very valuable tool for officers to use to get them where they belong at those hours, which is at home. And so we're recommending that the ordinance be passed as written. It also gives us a tool during the day when we find kids outside of school. If you don't already know, truancy is not as simple as a lot of people would believe. It actually takes a student missing several parts of days or days during a school year. This gives us a tool to find out why that child's out of school and gives us the authority to take them into custody and take them to the school and find out, make sure that everything's okay. So it's a very valuable tool for law enforcement. And as you already know, this ordinance is required to be renewed every three years. I can tell you that the numbers of contacts police officers have made for truancy, or not truancy, for the ordinance violation, the curfew violations, has increased significantly from 2005 to 2006. So we're recommending that we renew it for another three years and then in three years we'll bring it back to you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on the council? This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? No one? All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and I'm in line for a motion. Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Move to approve ordinance number O-2007-011-04, curfew ordinance, second reading.
Thank you, Councilmember Sutton. Councilmember Cabana.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Thank you. If you'll register your votes. Passes unanimously. The second item for the public hearings tonight is P-00907, consideration and action regarding the application of Birdville Independent School District for the final plat of Lot One, Block 94 Browning Heights East Edition in the CF District Community Facilities District to be treated as a C3. And that will be presented by James.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, citizens of Holtham City. As you stated, Mayor Pro Tem, we're conducting a public hearing and we're considering an action on the application of BISD for the final plat of Lot One, Block 94 Browning Heights Edition in the Community Facilities District, which is to be treated as a C3, which contains approximately 7.934 acres of land and located in the Williams Street survey, abstract 1416 and locally known as 4200 Doline. This came before you as the preliminary plat. A few months back, the applicant's proposing BISD to develop a new school facility at the site. BISD will construct the new school facility while maintaining operations with the existing older facility. I have members of Strickles, Rollins and Associates. They are the engineers and architects representing BISD. Mr. Sanford LaHugh is here and Ms. Linda Jordan, and they're here to answer any questions. This final plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The decision was at the March 27, 2000 P&amp;Z meeting.
Thank you, James. Are there any... Do you all want to come up and say something or you want to just be available for comments? Okay. All right. Is there... Are there any questions from anyone on the council? If not, then I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Not a talkative group tonight. All right. There's no one that wishes to speak, then I'll close the public hearing and I'm in line for a motion. It was a tie. So Councilmember Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That is for a move to approve final plat number P-009-07.
Councilmember Sutton.
That's for a second.
Okay. If everyone... Does anyone else have any comments, questions? If everyone will register their vote, please. And that passes unanimously. Okay, we now come to the portion on our agenda for the visitors and citizens forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak. All comments must be directed towards the presiding officer rather than an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks towards any individual. A three to six-minute time limit will be granted. If you filled out one of the yellow forms, you will have up to six minutes. If not, we'll catch you after the requested speakers and you will have three minutes. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken as it is not posted as an agenda item in accordance with the open meetings. Okay, the first speaker tonight is Bill Journay and his subject is for the incumbents.
Thank you, Pro Tem, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Journay. I live at 4529 Nadine here in Holtham City. The reason a crime doesn't pay is that when it does, it's called something else. As Christian leaders, of course, we know that the very nature of evil is evasion, put upon us in the form of ignorance and fear. Examples: road rage, total disregard for traffic laws due to selective enforcement, the increase of burglaries, thefts, even arsons. This behavior is quite prevalent in our cities today. Who voted for it? Those of us who would rather obey our laws are often targets for this dangerous behavior, but most of this is not the responsibility of our police departments today. I don't believe the insurance companies should be responsible for our traffic behavior, let alone the arbitrator, mediator, judicator or dictator over us. Nor should our city governments outsource these responsibilities to any for-profit imagination, leaving law-abiding citizens vulnerable, fending for themselves, hoping for justice that just doesn't exist. Good for the economy, however, bad for the people. If we wear a dishonest mask long enough, our face may grow to fit it. Our property, open target from eminent domain, our codes, our codes that are selectively enforced and outlaws that do with us pretty much as they please, especially after dark. The insurance man again never sees these things, nor do they care. And without proper police department and any burden of proof is on the victims, your citizens. This simply enhances the profits for the insurance industry and allows city governments to totally neglect their responsibility. Again, good for the economy, but bad for the people. Traffic violations, burglaries, fires, the growing number of deaths due to crashes, especially among our young people. Cameras are not the answer, nor shall they ever replace the need for police and social discipline. But where are our police? Their eyes are clear and bright, their voices soft and smooth, but they're not there. Never in the neighborhood, never in the neighborhood anymore. The catch and release of illegals and pandering to the business that uses them isn't helping our cause either. I realize you're not allowed to comment on these important issues, but perhaps you should. Perhaps you should before more of us are encouraged to vote out the incumbent before someone who will address these concerns above outsourcing and pandering to a for-profit lobbyist. There's really not much time left. The tyranny of a prince and an oligarchy is not so dangerous to public welfare as apathy of our citizens in a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Journay. Our next speaker is Jim Grazan and he's going to talk about spring and trees.
I absolutely love this time of year. I get up. My name's James Grazan, 6208 Little Fossil, Mr. Mayor, in case you need that. I love this time of year. I get up and especially about 4:30, the birds kind of start moving around and things and it's spring. School for the Blind, we used to have a song about when springtime comes to the Southland and something that I've always liked since I was a little bitty. But here in the next few weeks, probably Channel Five, I love to catch them doing it, there'll be a special about washing out your condensing unit on your air conditioner. Most all the heating and air people love to watch that because about four days, two to four days later, there are thousands of phone calls because somebody went out there and washed down their air conditioner while it was hot and collapsed the capacitor or something. Generally speaking, every year I get to go fix a few units for a few people. I like doing it, especially those that go on about 104 degrees and they're pretty negotiable at that time. But cottonwood trees, we... Our cities put a lot of effort into energy-saving windows and TU's got a program where they'll bring you some fluorescent light bulbs if you have the right income and they're... They have a heck of a... the right income, and they're, they have a heck of a program about sealing vents and stuff that people don't know about. It's quite a program. They spend three hundred and fifty dollars per house to help seal them up. But cottonwood trees, you know, do more damage to air conditioning and cost people more money and energy than a few windows ever did. It's, it's just unreal what cottonwood trees cost. So keep that in mind as you're cleaning up this spring, and myself, if there's enough shade around, I believe cottonwood tree ought to go, but that's just my thoughts. But as you're looking around, treat the ant beds, keep them away from those air conditioners, and keep those cottonwood fallings away from those air conditioners.
Thank you, Mr. Grazan. I don't have any more forms filled out. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council tonight? Mr. Eklund, it was three minutes, because you didn't fill out a form.
It won't even be that long, ma'am. Mayor Protem, my name's Ray Eklund, I live at twenty-five thirty-two Oakwood Terrace. Actually, I'd like to put in a plug for the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow night. I'd like for the citizens to know that they'll be considering the comprehensive land use plan in their workshop. Now, that does not mean the citizens get to speak, but they get to listen, because it is a public meeting. The comprehensive land use plan, and maybe your staff would like to address it, but basically it will form the way our city will look in the future with different kinds of zoning and where it's going to be and those kinds of things, which actually is very, very important to how a city turns out. So tomorrow night's going to start our new plan, we have one now, and through this process, and somewhere along the way, maybe we'll have a public hearing, but I think it's important that the citizens at least listen if they can't participate in a comprehensive land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, well, we'll move on to the boards and commissions. Are there any resignations tonight? Any appointments? Okay, now we'll move on to the excused absence of council members and mayors. The mayor is out of town, and he is not excluded. Is he excluded?
Well, only those council members.
Well, then we want.
I think the intent is for the mayor to be included in that.
You want the mayor included in that? Okay, so if he's excused, he'll take the absence, and if he's not excused, it'll only be council members? Okay.
Assuming your colleagues want to excuse him.
Okay. Anyone, oh, Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Due to unavoidable circumstances, Mayor Lanford was not able to be here tonight, so I'd like to move to approve his absence.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, madam, that's for a second.
Okay, would, would you register your votes, please? And he is excused, so he will be included on that. Okay, at this time, the council will move into executive session. It's authorized by chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. I guess we will reconvene, reconvene into executive session. As authorized by chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to seek legal advice from the city attorney about any matters listed on the agenda. This is section five five one point oh seven one, there's two more, five five one point oh seven two and five five one point oh seven four. This meeting's, uh, council meeting stands adjourned. The time is eight fifty. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the time is eight fifty, and we're going to reconvene to regular session. Is there a motion from executive session? Mr. Caban, uh, Councilmember Cabano?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem. This motion is to adjust the city manager's salary and benefits as discussed in executive session, retroactive to anniversary date.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Holcomb?
That is for a second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hutchinson?
No discussion. I press at the same time.
Oh, okay. Okay, please register your votes. And it is unanimous. With no further action?
Eight fifty-one.
Eight fifty-one, we stand adjourned. Can I hit it really hard now?
Yep.